So we're starting at 7:23.
Do you want that on?
Good evening, everybody.
You can turn it down a little bit.
Like that?
Adjustments to the agenda, I'm gonna add a 6.2 annual meeting preparation.
Thank you, Paul.
Oh, here we go. Audience and communications.
I'm sorry, I'm late.
Yeah, you're right on time.
Hearing none. Let's jump right into the presentation.
I'll go with what it adds. So I'm representing the fifth grade team tonight. Angela Gallian, she teaches writing, reading, and social studies. I teach math, reading, and social studies. And Paul Rochela teaches science, reading, and social studies. That's our fifth grade team.
So this slide I actually put in there just to kind of review about what our goal is around proficiency-based learning this year. So this is to continue the implementation of it by using learning targets and scales. And then we have the four really targets, establishing desired results, determining our acceptable evidence, and designing our relevant instruction, and track and communicate learning. And this is something the board has seen at each of the presentations, so.
All right, so what you would see at the top would say, "Reading targets," because at the beginning of the year, because all three of us teach reading, we decided we would really focus in on coming up with reading targets that we could all use. And every kid would have the same experience as far as getting those same targets and trying to hit them. So we worked on that at the beginning of the year, coming up with a series of targets, which actually the next slide.
Hopefully shows you some.
Has some of them. Doesn't show the whole thing. But so we focused on these, we did many lessons with them, we really reinforced, gave timely feedback to kids to show them how they could hit that target or exceed the target. And we go back to it. And then we didn't just use it with reading classes, if you go to the next slide, we also targeted it. We did it with social studies and we did it with science as well. So they were getting it.
Paul, the good news is.
You have it.
Three of four of us have.
Perfect. All right. So they were receiving those, using those same targets in social studies, they're using them in science, they're using them in reading. So it was really reinforced across the curricular area. And I think that was pretty beneficial to the kids, be able to see that it's not just one standalone thing, you actually, you're using it throughout everything you do. So then I had some examples of writing that Angela did. And she was noticing during report writing specifically, kids were having a really hard time coming up with their leading introductory paragraph. And so she broke it down and she said, "Okay, well, what we're really gonna focus in on right now is that lead paragraph. And what you need to do is get this magic circle around the target or exceeding the target." They did many lessons, they worked at it, and kids would come with, you know, looking at the scale and trying to meet that target. If they would come and bring it to her, they'd check it together, and they'd find out, "Okay, this is what you're missing, this is what you need to work on." And they'd go back and they'd work at it until finally, the next slide, which would show, "Ah, yeah, look at that."
Magic circle.
The magic circle would appear, which is coming up right here. So they get the magic circle, and then they could go on to the next part of the report writing. And it kind of just broke it up instead of, in the past where it'd be like, "Okay, we're doing report writing, we'd introduce it, we'd break it up into different things." But in the end, you had this makes it, so it's timely feedback for each part of it. So at the end, you know, hopefully every kid is making that standard or exceeding it. So that was that one. And I decided, you probably, you know, you're gonna listen to the sixth graders talk as well, and you're gonna, you heard the seven, eight talk. And I thought maybe it'd be better off to hear the kids talk about it as well. So I put together a quick video where I asked them, "How do learning targets help you?" and presented them in class. And so this is what the kids had to say about it.
I think that it does help you, because you can like understand what the teachers are expecting of you.
So I normally don't use them until later in the project. And when I am about, am about to finish it, then I look back at them and see if there's anything that I need to change to help my piece.
When I see a learning target, it always worked towards like getting all those things. I read it really hard, and I try to get, try really hard to get all those things in, squeezed into my story many times. And I always try to get it in there, make sure that you get, at least get a three. And if you hit the target and feel like you get a four, I think that's great.
So when I, normally when I'm giving a learning target, I'll probably just start working, and then I'll, once I've finished my work, I'll probably go back and check the learning target to get an idea, and then make changes based on what the learning target says, because it helps my work. Well, I look at the writing, like the targets before I do my work.
So I kind of, I don't, like I read them, but then when I'm working, I don't like go back and look at them. I just like type whatever I want to. But then I'll go back after I'm done typing, and I look at the targets, and then I change my writing to match the targets.
I take the time to look over the learning targets, so I know what the piece would look like, so I can get a three or a four.
All right, so basically, I maybe read it once, and then every time I have the same target, I just do what I usually did for the last one, if it got a good grade.
So students. Should be one more after that. Maybe not. All right, so what I was, what the next one should have said was that, you know, we had a lot of students talking about how they utilize it. And just like we're really new to this this year, a lot of students, this is new for students as well. So we have a wide breadth of what students are doing with learning targets at this point. You know, we have some, well, here it is. Some where students are really utilizing them and attacking them and using them to their fullest. And then some kids that are really on the outskirts and we're trying to bring them to it and really utilize it as a tool, and use it as a tool that it is. So that's part of the learning process for a lot of students as well as us. You were seeing more and more of it being utilized as the year has gone on. And, you know, I think the idea of a student using it as a tool and looking at things to realize like what they need to do in order to achieve the target or exceed it is, it's pretty powerful compared to in the past. You know, it's a, it's a tool for them to really know, "What's my expectation? It's right there before I get going and working on something." We're gonna go over what the scale is before you get going on it. This is what we're looking for, now you know what it is, and boom, now you can go and start working on it. Whereas in the past, it might have been, "Okay, we're doing this project," and give a little background information, but there might not have been that explicit, like, "This is what you need to do in order to meet that standard or achieve it, or exceed it." So that's where we are right now in fifth grade. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Twenty minute technology break? And Nancy, is your daughter all set, or?
You picked up these slides beforehand, right? You've actually seen some of this a little bit?
Yes.
All right.
And let me just say, that is incredibly good looking for the kids.
Isn't it?
Especially that kid right there.
Well, I am gonna talk in the, you can answer all the questions.
There you go. That's our bottle flipping day. We had a PBIS celebration where we, we learned the physics of bottle flipping. All right, so this is. What? We got it out of their system, they stopped doing it in the closet. They were driving us crazy, we said, "Fine, we're gonna, we're gonna ruin it for you by teaching you how it works."
They heard from kids in Essex earlier this week, and it's not cool.
I don't, I'm clueless about what you're talking about.
Let me go bottle.
Anyways.
We'll bring you.
Yeah, that'll be another agenda. All right, so this is, this is our kids. We're the new six, we call ourselves the new six in part to differentiate ourselves from the old six, because, and also, all of us are new. Next slide. So that's me, Mr. Johnny Tasty Manities, now Nancy, she does the math. The other woman with glasses on the far right is Ms. Abigail, we stole her from Bristol Elementary.
She regrets not being.
She does her science. Next to her is Ms. Riley, she's our tier two support, she's wonderful, we stole her from CBU. And Mr. Sevo, who's our special educator on the far left, we stole him from Baird. So a lot of stealing going on.
Good.
Excellent crew, we've been over great here. Next. So this is a simple philosophy relationship, but the big thing that's most important is, you know, the dynamic between the student being the engine for what's happening, the teacher being part of it, and the content. It's a nice triangle, nice tri- Venn diagram, but yes, all that meaningful stuff, you know. Next. All right, just so we know, so we have shifted the sixth to slightly more of a middle school model, I mean, in part because we didn't know each other, and so we weren't quite sure how we would integrate, but we knew that we didn't wanna have like a homeroom model. Part of that's because I'm only certified in social studies, language arts, and then we're bringing other people in, and Nancy coming for math world. And the way that we do it is, the way building is perfectly situated, so that the kids just rotate counterclockwise throughout their day. But it's mainly discipline-specific as far as the content goes. Some days we have Hive Day, which is what we call like our homeroom, and that is like they travel as a pack from class to class. And the others, the other two days, we have mixed days, so they get to see different people, see different groupings. It allows us to do flexible groups and such. And oftentimes, you, you might have a larger class size than Nancy and Rebecca.
Yeah, go share, go share that too.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is our schedule, and just sort of emphasizing the same thing, we were able, because of the Tuesdays, we slipped in a long block. So a long block humanities and a long block STEM. And then on Wednesday, we said, "Hey, this is working really well." We did a long block on Wednesday as well, so it's, it's nice, gives us real flexibility with groupings and schedule and activities and such. Next. ATM. So one of the things that's important to us is being an entire sixth, as opposed to just clustered in our own little classrooms. So all-team meeting, we have it on, we start the week with it, and then we end the week with exploratories that are kid-generated kind of thing. And then, you know, we think of ourselves as the new six. Next. And then we also think of ourselves as Hive, so we start out every morning in our homerooms, and we're doing the restorative justice work, circles, all that kind of stuff, team-building activities. We have it one UA a week, we do Hive, and then we do it every morning. And three of the mornings, we get a nice half an hour session before academics start, so it's really effective. And we've seen a real change in the kids over the past four months, which sets up the education, because if the kids are getting along and doing well, we can focus on the content. Next. Humanities. So humanities, I teach literacy and social science. My philosophy is that teaching to read and write in a vacuum is useless. You gotta read something, you gotta write something, you gotta have something to say. So social sciences, I medium. Also, the things that I'm gonna show you, they go into science, they go into math as well, but I'm focusing on my world. Next. So I know you get a lot of information about targets, we talked about targets and summatives. I wanted to show you a different kind of start thing that we see in literacy, and that is sort of these enduring skills, skills that they've gotten in younger grades, skills that we're building on and that we keep expecting them to do. So I picked an easy one, which is reading stamina. I expect them to read 100 pages a week, or essentially 200 pages every two weeks, that's how often I assess it. And so here's our basic target sheet for the ones, twos, threes, fours. Next. And sort of, it's a, it's a formative, and we talk about summatives, but the summative's kind of rolling. And what we'll see later is, you'll see that the way that we've set up our report card, our reporting system for everyone is, the score that really shows is the latest score, because we wanna see the latest success. But there's no like summative like, "Oh, I've tackled that reading problem," because, and this is independent reading, is what we're doing, we're trying to get lifelong readers kind of thing. Right, next. So this is how it shows up, this is an assignment that I give, it's a reading journal, they do them every two weeks, and it's got multiple parts. So this, in this little red box you see, it's focused on that little part. They record how many pages they read over two-week period and such. And there's other elements to it, like we're teaching them MLA citation, and you'll see another part in just a sec. Next. So this is how it looks in Jump Rope, if you're not that familiar with Jump Rope, you see there's five different things, I'm scoring them on in that one assignment. So instead of just like in my old day, you got a piece of paper back and had a big rosy B minus on it, I'll inflate my grade, I'll have B minus on it, and it said, "Hey." And I'd be like, "Hey, how'd you get that?" "I don't know, it's Mrs. Hutchinson's magic formula," or whatever it was. So here, the students can specifically look, and parents, and we'll show you in a minute, parents can look at it too, or they can say, "Ah, their grammar's okay," you know, "but they're really excelling in reading every week." Or a kid up there is like twos across, but then in three, he's got the MLA citation thing down, so he's got one, he's got that thing down. We can really focus, he's got a one on reading stamina, let's really focus on that. And then I have the, prompts me to have the conversations with them, parents have the conversations with them. It's really isolated, as opposed to saying, "Why are you failing humanities?" Next. So this is a more advanced one, this is analysis. So they, in their independent writing book, I'll give them a prompt, and they'll write, respond to the prompt. And I really focused on evidence, using specific detailed information, and then the analysis of telling me, "Why are you telling me this thing?" So instead of just writing a summary or random facts that are like explaining how it answers the prompt, whatever the, whatever the claim is gonna be that they're doing. And this person's writing it, they actually do it on computer, I've sheeted there. So the next one. So that's where that is, there, this is a graphic organizer that they use. And I'm trying to also, at the same time, emphasizing three-column notes, trying to teach them how to do, take three-column notes, so you see the three columns there. And then they take that graphic organizer and they transfer it and write a full paragraph from what they're doing there. Next. This is the feedback that they get, so like they, we send, I'll tell you in a sec, but here you've got, I've got my targets here for what I'm looking at for their writing. So the first one was evidence, the next one is analysis, and then the final one is grammar usage mechanics. And I've got it detailed out, circle it up, I've got some marking indicators there. But then also on the paper itself, I go through and I'm marking it up as old-school kind of thing, circling, and then they go back, they look what they done, and then they fix it for the next time, hopefully. Next. So this is what the analysis looks like, and same assignment, five things. Next. So what you can do, the other part I'd like about Jump Rope is of these enduring ones. So I've done all these different reading journals, and this is reading stamina, went back to reading stamina. And I can see all the way across the board, is the student going up, is the student down? I remember after Christmas break, I had a parent who's, he only says, "My kid got a two." You know, on the, on the recent progress report, and I'm like, "Well, he didn't, didn't read that much." He goes, "Well, it was break, and he was with his cousins," and all that. And I'm like, "That's great, you know that, he's gonna return to form, we're not too concerned about that." But isn't it great that we had the conversation, because you had that data, you had that information, it was broken down like that? So that was a, that's the benefit of that. Next. So this is one of the things we're able to call up, and I can look, and I can sit there and go, "Frank, he's got a one." And blurred out kid below Jean, he's got a two. Those are the kids I'm most concerned about, those are the kids I pull, you know, I talk to them about reading, we come up with strategies. And then two weeks later, we see if our strategies are working. But this is a nice, I love this, I love the graphs that they use here. Also know that this is the, they record, the way we do it is the last attempt at the target. So we can see, is this a success or not? Next. And then the parents, we, the portal isn't open, but we send parents' progress reports every two weeks in the core, so that they can get it. And we do it by, we show all the assignments they've done. So this grammar usage mechanic one, which is what I've circled here, you can sit there and you can see the trail. So you see the 3O, see that, a 2.5, but then you see the 3O. So we're kind of feeling, "Okay, maybe something went on with that second formative, I don't know." I can see up above with the reading, I can see they're getting 3Os, so it's consistent. Parents can see like if it's wavering and such, right? So and that's, so that's what we send home every two weeks by email.
Can I ask a question for, as a board member, as a parent? The graph.
Yeah.
That's green at the top.
Yeah.
Is that a, an average of all the ones underneath?
No. That is the most recent one.
Just the most recent, okay.
Now you can, when you set up Jump Rope, you can set it so that, so that it does averages, you can set it up to what the, it's a declining average is what I think I call. But we decided philosophically to go with the most recent work, would be the thing on the graph. But because of that, you know, if you got like that parent who got that two, they got a orange or yellow, or whatever the color was on the thing, and they're like, "Ah." And then I could point out and say, "That's what the trail, they always had threes and fours." You can see that this is an anomaly, so. And then parents can pretend that the 4O is like, "Oh, they always do, so that one time they do well." So it goes both ways. All right, next. I'm out.
Okay.
So.
Can I ask you just a quick question for Tom?
Next.
In years past, what I really enjoyed about your classes is that you got to show students data, their own data.
Yeah.
Are you still, are you doing that with Jump Rope?
Yes.
Kind of getting the, the kids to understand?
We send, we send progress report every two weeks, they get it in their school email, and the parents get it in the email. What we're finding with the sixth grade is, they're not used to looking at their own data, and they're, and they're.
Some do.
Being responsible, some do. But that's, I ask, and they're like, only a third of them say, "Yeah, I listened to it, I read it." But so now we're moving more towards, "Hey, open up that email, let's talk about how," and trying to get, so the parents can talk to them instead of talking to us.
I think they understand it more now, so they're, they're becoming more invested in it. So now I feel like I'm getting more questioned about, "Oh, I got a, hmm, what do I need to do?" You know, but that, it's been a maturing process as we come since the start of the year.
Yeah, when the portal goes live, it'll be.
I think it'll be more so.
Even more so.
So on behalf of Rebecca, Rebecca and I teach STEM on Tuesdays, so we have STEM Tuesdays. And so this is kind of a broad definition of STEM, but generally speaking, we started the year off with the engineering design process, and we were trying to teach them that everything that we do this year is going to sort of go around this cycle with projects that were hands-on, engaging, and that gave them some voice in choosing what they were going to do based on the content that we were working on. So the next series, one, two, three, four, three or four slides are pictures from the very beginning of the year, where we were starting with simple materials and structures. And our end goal was for them to start thinking about what made stable structures. And they really experimented and had lots of failures, and learned from those failures into the endpoint where we got to the power of the triangle. And then once we got there, can you go to, so here, you can just see a few. So they had their straws, now we have the spaghetti and marshmallows, and there were different challenges that they were trying to achieve. One more. This one where they actually had to build a structure out of paper, and they had, they were limited on the materials on this one, and they had to support a certain amount of weight. But then finally, it all came together on the next slide, where we brought in this whole idea of bridges, where they learned about different bridges and styles and structures of bridges, used what they learned in all of those other things, and did some, a little bit of research and some building of different types of bridges. And so that was sort of the culminating project for that part. And the next slide tells us what we're doing now, which is really kind of, it's deep, we're just in the beginning phases of it. So we're using a science topic about Newton's laws of motion. And you can see that the learning target there says, "I can apply Newton's third law to design a solution to a problem involving the motion of colliding objects." So what they are doing now, using that engineering design process, is thinking about that third law and figuring out what problems there are involving collisions. And so here are some of the things that they have been coming up with, of many. And over the next few weeks, they will be designing and then testing models of those projects that they decided upon. They'll be working in partners, and there's a lot of voice and a lot of decision-making on their own. Kids generally, from what I've heard, look forward to STEM Tuesdays, so there's long blocks opposite of humanities. Okay? Math. So when I, when I was thinking about proficiency-based learning, it's kind of a big switch, in a way, for math, because math is just so structured and layered. So this particular circle right here is the one that I spend a lot of time on, those habits of interaction, habits of mind and interaction, connect with the best practices that we've done. And in, with the skills and the concepts, my goal is for kids to have deep understanding of whatever it is that we're working on. So we want that balanced growth, but this is where I spend a majority of my time, right here. With connected math this year, sixth grade is a, is a switching program and a whole switch in style of how, how math is done. So we have a series of units that have these sort of anchor big ideas that carry through over the course of the year. So what we did was, we started here with learning about common multiples and factors, and then we moved over to fundraising goals over there, we talked about unit rates, the beginning of the fractions and the connection between unit rates, and then the land over there, and this one right here, all the operations with fractions. And the reason I'm pointing these out is you're gonna see them again in another slide, which will make a little bit more sense. So bringing in the whole idea of targets with, for each unit, I have about two or three targets, in addition to using a program called Dreambox to support the proficiency, especially where there might be holes that are different for every kid. And this target right here about representing thinking consistently, accurately, doesn't matter what unit we're in. So those, those are always there, and then the unit-related targets kind of change over time. So next slide. So what I've, I've found, and what the kids are pretty much starting to get right now is, everything that we've done just keeps cycling back. So we had specific targets for the ratios, and we had unit rates to solve problems, but now all of a sudden, we're in this unit with operating with fractions, and they're starting to say, "Oh, the common multiples, I've been using those." And, "Oh, the operation with adding and subtracting fractions with common denominators is coming up to play with what we're doing with multiplying and dividing fractions." And they're starting to see how all of these targets sort of overlap throughout the year. So next slide. That's sort of the concept part, the last slide, this is something that's just basic skills, those things that kids need to have in their tool bag. So I, we're using just very straightforward targets about, can I divide whole numbers? Can I, and then, can I take that to the next step? Can I divide decimals? And so it's just sort of that, basic skills, we have targets for those too. Then, what it might look like in Jump Rope, and because math is just so sort of built step by step, the way I'm using it, and just taking that last target, I can divide whole numbers. In the beginning, we did some baselines and formative assessments, and this particular student got an N, which meant that I didn't even have enough information from that student to say that they fell on the one. They were really struggling with it. So that student sought out assistance, they practiced, they retake, they retook the assessment. Kids can retake as often as they want, once they've shown me that they've done some work to get better at something. Kids in sixth grade are like, they get the grade, "Can I retake it, like now?" It's like, "No, yes, you can retake it, but you gotta show me that you've done some work." And you can see that this particular student raised their, their most recent score, at that point it was a three, and they were very excited about it, so. So that's how I'm using the data as much as possible. This is just a slide of Dreambox, a report that I get in Dreambox. And the way I'm using this when I'm thinking about proficiency is, given the amount of time that I have in a year, there's so many standards, I can actually assign certain standards for kids to use in Dreambox. So one of the reports that I got was that, in this particular standard, those, we had no progress at all, kids hadn't even started it, it hadn't come up. So I assigned it to them, knowing that they're going to need it to do some of the work that's coming up. So that's another way I'm using this to complement what we're doing in class. So science, bear with me, I'm gonna use notes for this. So these are the units in science that Rebecca is working on for this year right now. As I mentioned in the STEM, we're doing a force of motion there, and she is working on life science right now. So go ahead. But what she is working on for her learning target are these. So these eight scientific practices are what she is doing within the context of the unit that you just saw. So kids will be revisiting these targets over and over and over again throughout the content that she's been working on in science class. Make sure I didn't miss anything about that.
So just to add a little bit, so the content ones that you saw are from.
So just to add a little bit, so the content ones that you saw are from the new standards, the next generation.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And those are her content areas. And then these are the eight scientific practices. And a lot of the science work that we've been doing around what should the targets be in science really have been focused on these eight scientific practices, asking questions, developing, and using models because they can transfer across all the content areas. So you can apply that in your science all year long. And that's how they're assessing a student's understanding.
I think of it kind of like these, you know, the, the, these making sense, justifying and generalizing what we're doing in math, which cuts across any concepts that we're working on. These are cutting across all of the units that they're doing in science. And she said that she has about two or three targets that she works on per unit. The next slide. The way the kids find out about the targets and what they're working on is they have the task sheet. And each of the learning targets is on there and there's information on there as to whether this is something that they're doing as formative, summative, or if it's just practice. Here are some models. I have to say, you know, not having taught science in a really long time, I've been really impressed with the work that the kids are doing on modeling. They started out the year having no idea what we were talking about at all, modeling. And they're becoming very sophisticated and being able to, to develop and use the models. These are some from the, this one is from a unit a while ago and this is one that was just a few weeks ago. They're really coming along and being able to show their learning. Pretty impressive. And finally, science meetings. And I don't know what kids have experienced in the past, but these meetings are, it basically, it's a circle. And they're sharing their ideas, they're sharing their learning. And if I go back to how they're making sense, justifying and generalizing all those ideas in science, that, that's where it comes out in a shared environment. I think it was a little bit strange in the beginning that that, that's how the classes were, were being, how the summaries of the classes were, were happening. And I think kids actually now are appreciating the fact that this isn't, you know, a solitary sport, that we're all learning from each other.
No, science meetings are really an opportunity for kids to justify their thinking, explain what they're, what they've noticed. And a lot of times after a while, when you're in those meetings, the, the teacher is not the subject or the focus. It's really the kids looking at each other in dialogue between each other and having debate and discussing and proving their thinking. So it becomes very meaningful. It helps them when they go back to write about their claims, evidence, and reasoning.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Sorry.
No.
Thank you.
So questions still can be asked.
If I recall from a prior presentation on the learning targets, the learning targets are things you guys create, correct? So these are all things that you guys have formulated? And what, essentially what you want to get out of a particular exercise or unit?
Right. And they're, they're tied to the common core standards. And they're also tied to their transferable skills that, as Jeff Evans had talked about earlier. So there's those transferables and then there's the content. And then from those, they use that to help to develop and formulate the targets.
What's really interesting though is a few weeks ago, Monica Carter was able to share some of the learning targets that fifth grade math teachers from across the union or district, whatever we call it now.
That was my next question.
Right. So they, they, we saw theirs and I, and they saw mine. And honestly, they're like pretty much the same thing. So we're on the same page. And I think the next thing would be as a whole group to really, or make it so that we're, we're all using that same common language across the way together. I know, uh, the last month or two months ago, Stan and Emily and the literacy teachers for the five eight in Heinsberg all, we got together, spent half a day and sort of hammered out like, what are the, what are the things we're using? Is there a sequence involved and all that kind of stuff? Look at what common language, make sure. Cause the time I've been teaching, it's been like thesis focused, claim, you know, is a lead the same as like, we had all these great discussions. So we get that language down and then believe that the intent is that to do an S U Y.
Yes. So there's been a lot, there's, and that started working being vertical. And then there's also that just grade level to grade level.
And jump rope's got a bank.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, as much as I'd like to spend a lot of time writing up targets, it's much easier to go inside. Oh, look what Williston's doing. Click. And that's fine. I mean, when you sit down and design a unit, you start with the targets and you steal them. It's ideal.
There's more and more of them to choose from than there were at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
No, this is really interesting. And then you're, you're doing activities for validating the instruments and so forth. Making sure that they're measuring what you wanna measure and.
Yes.
That everyone's looking at each other's work.
Yes. So for example, in STEM, they had to write about, when they did the bridges, they also had to research a real bridge and then talk about the structural things with it. And then the way that he evaluated that paragraph. Two of the things were the evidence and analysis.
Yeah.
Things that I use and see what this, this student is doing, matching up in my class with what they were doing when they're writing for other people. So we're calibrating with each other and making sure it's valid.
Sounds like fun. I want, I wanna be in the sixth grade.
Come on over. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Going back to the agenda, reports to the board, five point one, principals report.
So Susan, the agenda, and you know, I think we put a bunch of fun stuff there. Penguin Plunge Paul really took, took the lead on that once again. We took a year hiatus last year, but this is, I believe, the fourth year that he's done it. So that was fun. Champ Kane on Valentine's Day did selfies with the kindergarten through second grade. And that was a lot of fun. It was, it was fun to see from the fear to the absolute joy. You know, it's just amazing how kids react to a big green guy. Just want to acknowledge that Paul Rashlo let the staff know that he's going to be retiring. And I know the board will also do a, a thank you for his time. But I mean, he's, his connections with kids are second to none and he's definitely gonna be missed.
He's been a wonderful part of, I can't imagine.
I, I know. It's really hard to imagine, I mean, not hearing accordion every so often in the hallway. And he has, he has a really great way about him, about him.
We have new hires. Muri will be joining us as a parent specialist in third and fourth grade. And Lindsay Jones is gonna be taking over as, for our long-term subposition. We also have, there's another long-term subposition that we just filled with a former student of mine. I'm now in that old category. A food drive student council is doing the food drive amongst other things. Ski and ride has been phenomenal this year. Great snow and a lot of participation. I think sixty kids were there on last Wednesday. And Keith, if you'd like to chaperone, we're desperately in need for somebody tomorrow, or I might just have to do it again.
That's not the information I heard. I heard you guys were fine, but all right.
Well, Matt is sick. And, and last week, there was a couple of chaperones that had work commitments. So.
It's conceivable.
Perfect.
All right.
All right. I, I will say that you're in.
No pressure.
That's a yes.
And then February is just assessment month. So tomorrow and Thursday, Susan's taking the lead on NAEP, which is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And then soon thereafter, either at the end of this week or when the students get back, they will be taking a youth risk behavior survey.
If you recall, last year, we had some questions about some of the questions.
Yeah, two years ago.
Our parents prepped.
Yes. There's, there is a parent note that goes home and it explains. And even with that, it doesn't say, I mean, it gives an overview, but then the kids go home and say exactly what the questions say. And Shayla has lots of experience.
You can redirect to them to me if you need to.
No, yeah, so it's, it's one of those things. I, I'm fully in support of the information. I think it really helps guide not only locally, but at the state level. It's good information. I like to see trends. The four or five musical is in full swing and so it's gonna be neck and gale. And you know, forty-five, fourth and fifth grade students are involved. And Kristen has a piece of it, right? Yeah. So, so it's just, you know, I, I'm very happy with what our drama program has become. And I, I think that this four or five musical really gets kids interested and provides them an opportunity to see and feel what it, what it means to be on stage. Our number of five twenty-nine is accurate as of this, when this report came out a couple of weeks ago. The, the interesting piece is that we're usually hovering around five thirty-five. And when I saw the five twenty-nine, I was like, oh, it seems down a little bit. But what I realized is that our, our pre-K is about half the size as it was last year. So in terms of school age kids, i- if that number was the same, we're, we're on the trajectory of still adding a couple. And as, as you know, that first grade class with three teachers is one that we need to keep our eye on as a board and administrative. Right now, it's twenty-one and one class with twenty-two in first grade. So it's, it's worrisome, but we know how the summer can go. We might lose five kids in that grade level. And but if we gain five kids, I may be coming back to you or to the CVSD board depending on timing, asking for help. So that's the principal report.
Uh, CVSD debrief. Colleen, I think that would be you if you want to chime in a little bit.
Well, we had presentation from Mike Boardman about our insurance policy.
Not the SU, the S, the new SD.
Wrong board.
Yeah, exactly. And you're the only one that knew, of the four of us that knows about it.
Uh, CVSD. So the CVSD met quite frequently to help develop the budget. And the budget for the first time is going to be presented to voters for all of the school districts. It's a number hovering around seventy-five million dollars. And I forget the exact number, but that's the dollar sign. That's a number that people are gonna see. And that supports all of the schools and operations, educational operations in the S, in the supervisory union soon to be school district. As we were developing the budget, our decision-making, a lot of it was really going back to principals and getting their input and so forth. But some of the decision-making, we knew that we wanted to bring a budget in that would be palatable to voters, not adding programs. So it was level funding program. And even with that, there were increases just to the nature of things costing more one year to the next. Some of the decision-making around class sizes and adding teachers or subtracting teachers and buildings, the class size enrollment was a big, was one of the parameters that we looked at. So for example, as Heinsberg, the class sizes go up, there, you know, that would be a consideration for the entire Champlain Valley School District is, is looking at how class sizes are equitable across the school district, the unified school district. So going forward, really the, the budget was based on supporting autonomy in local schools, but supporting equitable program where possible. I think that's the big one. Just a reminder that everything transfers to the new school district July first, twenty seventeen. So and the board really just being organized, having its first real meeting in October, that there was a lot of work that happened in a short amount of time. And so what we know that we need to do is continue to develop our policies and protocol. And, you know, particularly related to like budget development and how to better engage the community in, in that process. And, you know, some of it will probably happen more at the building level. So principals might be taking on some role in that in some way. But just, you know, keep doing the wonderful work that you're doing with what you do already. Cause that informed the process this year already. That's, that's, you know, I think the, the budget is the big news.
Absolutely.
Can I ask some questions about the budget? Is there a plan to communicate, I guess, so that people understand how does seventy-five million compare to what I voted on last year? And how we held informational meetings at the school in each of the towns? I'm sure they did in other towns as well. And we did the flyer. Is there something similar to that gonna be happening for the district as a whole?
So a couple pieces. One, believe it or not, the first annual meeting of the school, new school district is two nights from now. Board members will be there. You know, it's, it was hard to find a time for an annual meeting that aligned with town meeting day, just because the calendar fills up. So the first one is two days from now. However, our regular town meeting and the budget presentations that typically happen prior, the Monday before town meeting day, there will be budget presentations in each of the towns.
So the representative members of the board would be at each town?
Yeah. And Ray Maynor may do it for us. You know, he signed up to do it for Heinsberg, presenting on the budget. And we'll have to coordinate somehow, Keith. I don't know. Bob Mason has been coordinating some of it.
Is there also an informational meeting on that Monday prior to?
That, that's the informational meeting.
Yeah, that's what she's saying, yeah.
And then, but we'll also have our annual meeting.
No. There is not an informational meeting on Monday night, March third, for the CVSD officially.
It's Monday afternoon.
Isn't that the twenty-third? Isn't that what's in two nights?
Oh, two.
That's the informational meeting on the budget for CVSD.
However, my understanding is that there will be board representation to answer questions. And I'm not sure what you're given. I have to, you know, I wasn't part of, if you were given anything for your annual.
I have not been given a thing.
Okay. I'll check into that.
So this was confusing for me too. So I asked Sandy and Elaine. So the Heinsberg School Board will still hold its final annual meeting on Monday, March sixth at six P M. In CBU auditorium, followed by the Heinsberg Town Annual Meeting. That same night, CVSD Board will hold a meeting at four P M. in room one forty-one, forty-two. CBU's board meeting will be at five in room one forty-one, forty-two.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So I think that they're providing.
That is very confusing.
They're, they're providing an informational on the annual meeting. So if you're not able to go to the annual meeting, I believe that that Monday afternoon at four P M. is an additional opportunity.
From the consolidated board?
From CVSD.
Okay.
So it, it, yes. Even I'm confused.
No, it's, it's a really confusing year. Yeah.
It, it's a different year. It won't be like, so when I said, just a reminder that the board organized in October and, you know, next year, it will be different. You know, there'll be presentations in each community and so forth. We just have eight boards that were trying to get information out there. So, yeah, there's a flyer. There's someone was working on articles. for the record and so forth.
Yeah, no, I get it. It's a lot of work, a little bit of, a little bit of time. I just hadn't heard anything, so I didn't know and I'm being asked and I didn't know what to say. Um.
Well, the, the, uh, I don't know what paper's being used, but the record hasn't come out yet. The record that we would have used as a Heinsberg board to put a flyer in, hasn't come out yet.
There is going to be a flyer.
There is one. It's an imperfect year. There's no question about it.
So just so I can make sure I got it right, March sixth at six P M., we will be at town meeting presenting what?
Following the Heinsberg Town Annual Meeting, so Heinsberg Town.
No, no, no. March sixth at six P M., we have an annual meeting of the Heinsberg School District.
Oh, that's, isn't that us?
That's us.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Do you want me to check with Sandy or that's, you're definitely.
No, I'm positive.
Okay.
So what? And you, you said the same thing, what you read back?
Yes.
That's what I wrote down.
No, what I, I'm reading right from Sandy's, the Heinsberg School Board will still hold its final annual hearing on Monday, March sixth at six P M. in the CBU auditorium.
Yeah.
Oh, followed by, I thought, I thought we were the one following.
Nope.
Followed by the Heinsberg Town Annual Meeting.
If you have, if you have people asking you questions about the school budget, do not send them to that meeting. Because that meeting will not be discussing any school budget. If they have questions about the school budget, they should go at four o'clock.
Correct.
To hear the CBSD presentation on its budget.
That's why I was saying, what are we talking about?
Alternatively, what I understand from Colleen is that Ray will be at town meeting, starting at seven o'clock.
No, he'll be there at six. Just in case there are questions that come up and he'll also be there at seven.
Did you confirm that with him?
He, he, he said that he would do that, yeah.
Okay.
And town meeting's Tuesday. Just for my dumb brain.
No, town meeting is Monday night at seven o'clock.
Okay, and he's gonna be there at six, along with us.
He will be there at six o'clock during our meeting.
Okay, in case there's questions.
Someone asks a question about the school budget, I am gonna say, I have no idea. Why don't you ask Ray?
Right. And what is our purpose during that time?
It is the final meeting of the Heinsberg School District. We're gonna talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
Um, but the, to learn about the budget, it's also this Thursday. That's their annual meeting.
Don't know about.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's the stock PowerPoint that's gonna be distributed to everybody to explain it.
Thursday, the twenty-third? Where's this gonna be? At, at the school, right?
Here. You, the twenty, February twenty-third?
Yeah.
Here.
At CBU?
In, uh, yeah.
In the auditorium?
Uh, no, room one sixty, I believe.
One forty, one forty-two.
Oh, I wrote that down. Okay, and then, um.
That's right next door.
Four P M.
That's, that's where the, the, the board meetings are, isn't it?
One forty is right there, right next door.
Okay.
And that's at four P M. Okay. Thank you for letting me ask those questions.
Thank you for asking.
I mean, I'm being asked and I'm like, I don't know. I'm not on that board.
Great.
Okay.
We know there's work to do on that, this whole process, yes. It's an area of growth.
It's, it's fine with me. I just wanted to be able to help. I'm just concerned.
And Mike will bring it back to the team.
So.
We'll see what the flyer says.
Yeah, I know.
I think there is a grave risk of it going down at the moment.
I, yeah.
I think the budget that was sent out says that there's gonna be a CBU Articles Vote at six P M. I can go look at that again when I get home. But the paper thing that was mailed to houses is, I, I think it's wrong.
There is, there is a CBU meeting at five o'clock.
Okay, I'll, I'll check and I'll email you if you.
CBU, CBU Boards Meeting will be at five P M. in room one forty-one, forty-two.
Same as us, it's a final meeting.
Yeah, our meeting is at six because we got shoehorned in between the CBU meeting and the Heinsberg Town Meeting.
But CBU will not be discussing the budget, just like we will.
CBU will not be discussing their budget either, cause they don't have one.
Right.
But we're in the auditorium, they're in room one forty-one, forty-two.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Clear as mine.
Yeah.
Mike, you can say we need help.
Yeah. I got it.
Like move on, we've established.
All right, SU debrief, uh, we had a meeting, uh, we talked about some things. I really don't think there's any need to take this board's time with what we talked about at the SU meeting. Um, other than we had a good common topic presentation from the principals on. Let me get my acronym right.
Proficiency-based.
It wasn't proficiency-based learning, was it? No.
Changing role of leadership.
Principal as instructional leader.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that's, that was what it was generally about, but I guess it's the PLCs that, that was the, we talked about ESTs. And anyway, yes, it was about principal as instructional leader. And we heard from a number of principals from throughout the SU, uh, on three different, uh, categories of things that they're doing, two of which really focused on the, uh, professional development.
And the Tuesday.
The time, the time that's dedicated to professional development on Tuesdays or Wednesdays for CBU. Cause Adam was there in one of the groups. Um, all right, five point four, second quarter F M R. I think I saw good news.
Yep.
Any further detail? Questions?
No, once again, I mean, we're, I couldn't be happier with where our budget is, so it's, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, it's good to see that we're in such a place.
Okay, good.
Cause I know it's not true in other places.
So then five point five facilities, can we talk about spending some of the money?
Yeah. Um, so the process that Susan and I went through is just really taking a look at, um, we want to make sure that the building is in good standing. Um, we always do. But then is there, is there anything that we should really focus in on to make sure that regardless of SU, CBSD, money coming in and out, um, that we wanna get projects done that need to get done. Um, and because of the good standing that we're in, we're, we're able to do some of that this year. Um, and it, it's gonna, the timeline is gonna be pretty quick. So I've had Tim, um, Tim and I and Susan have kind of gone around to see, and we've also asked teachers and faculty, um, what their needs are. So we've put together a list, um, that equals about ninety thousand dollars. And then it is, uh, is a repair for the nineteen sixty-nine roof, um, that is, um, is put out to bid, um, and it's gonna come in around forty thousand dollars. Um, the library carpet, uh, is in need of being replaced, but if you, uh, can visualize our library, there, uh, there's a bunch of large furniture that needs to be moved in order to do the job. So it's also not only doing the library carpet, but getting a moving company actually into, to do the moving.
Four tons of books.
Yeah, um, so that's, that's one that kind of has been, um, on our to-do list for a while, but it's, it's a pretty big job. We're gonna continue to, uh, just become as energy efficient as we can. So there's a, a line item for about eight thousand dollars to, to replace almost all of the, the lights in our, in our building to LED. Uh, most of them are there, but I, I've shown you a graph before about the, the huge amount of cost savings that we've, um, benefited from with our energy efficiency. There's also, because Tim is who he is, he's taking advantage of a fifteen hundred dollar, um, efficiency Vermont rebate from doing that, so, um, the other, uh, the other pieces is that we don't have, uh, window shades for the white building and, and, uh, and the, the shades in the three, four wing are, um, pretty inadequate. So it's one, that, this is, um, one of the things that the teachers said, you know, if, if we can, it would be fantastic to have shades because it's really hard to see the projector and that's something that I wouldn't have noticed. So I'm really glad that they came forward with that. Um, so we've, uh, even though it wasn't, uh, big enough to put out to bid, uh, under the money terms, Tim still did that and got a, a, a really great deal on shades. It's the people that did the, the primary wing seven years ago when it was done. The other piece about becoming more energy efficient, uh, or, uh, waste reducing is, uh, putting in electrical hand dryers in the bathrooms. And, uh, we, not only do we go through so many paper towels, um, but, um, getting that really heavy wet paper towel into the trash receptacle or in the recycling is really challenging for students.
I've seen that, yeah. It's like a big sign, brown paper here. And the, the other thing is spewing brown paper.
Yes.
Uh, so this is kind of a selfish one. I, uh, I, I think kids are really gonna enjoy the, the electric hand dryers and it's gonna reduce waste and it's also gonna, uh, keep our spaces really clean. Uh, we're in need of a, a floor machine, uh, cleaner. Um, and then, you know, just some little odds and ends, but the, the total for that is about ninety thousand dollars. And, um,
For all of that.
For all of that. Uh, Bob and I and, uh, Keith and Elaine during the agenda planning, um, talked about this and, and we're, um, in an okay place to move forward, um, fiscally. We, on, on the, the bid proposals, we need board action to okay the bid proposals. So, um, what I would probably do is, is get those in order for you and then ask if we could, um, if you're feeling okay with it, uh, after seeing them, to, to have you sign off on those so that we can get the projects started. Some of the, the, the big ones that need to be scheduled far in advance, the library carpet and the roof primarily.
As I've said to you before, I think given what the board has said the last couple of times leading up to this, I think you'll get whatever you need. So you let us know what you need from us. When, when and, when and where.
Yep. So that would make me, Susan, I mean, I, I really feel like our, our building would be in great shape um, if we were able to get these things taken care of. And that's also setting up the CBSD again. I mean, I, I think we're becoming a model of energy efficiency for a large building. We've already gotten a couple of really prestigious awards and, and this is just gonna help continue on that trend. So it's also something I'm pretty proud of.
I have a question. What does the school have as far as fans go? Cause I know sometimes when we start in August, there's a good month of just wretched heat and there'll be notes like, if parents can bring fans, then that'd be great. Like, is that something you should put on your list or?
Yeah, we, I mean, uh, we have enormous fans that are, uh, kind of floor drying fans. So when we wax and things like, those are the big red.
Right.
They kinda sit on the floor. Uh, those are too loud for instructional purposes and then the, yeah, we, we have a month in September where it's painful up in the middle of school.
Doesn't make sense, but it doesn't make sense to do.
Um.
I don't know, just throwing it out there.
Yeah, and, um, so it's, uh, it probably wouldn't have to go on this list, but it's, it's, uh, definitely something that we can look at, uh, just within our regular operating budget to, uh, because I, I also don't, it's not that I don't feel comfortable asking parents, but that's, that, that should be, uh, a, a school expense.
Well, I don't think it's a big deal to ask, but it just might make things easier for you.
Yeah.
Cause as you were talking about the shades, I was thinking, oh yeah, it does get really hot.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Some legit shades too will.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Can I just, can we, and I'm sorry if this was somewhere else and I didn't find it, but can we just follow up on the discussion we had either last meeting or two ago about the field? And where?
The baseball field?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, oh, I think where we left off that discussion was, um, there, uh, Bill, uh, mentioned the idea of probably trying to keep the backside because it's a community field and, and there's other people other than the school that, that use it. Um, in terms of, uh, my ideas for a bike path and things of that nature, I'm still, I'm still all for that. Um, in terms of getting a bank of bikes or, or something like that, that's, um, something that we can, it's, it's something that I'm not gonna let go of and, um, the P E teacher is already being really creative with his budget and how he allocates his resources. So, uh, it's still something high on my list and I think that we can, we can craft that field without a huge amount of expense. Unless we turn it into a legit, like BMX trial, which, uh, probably. And then, you know, Tim, Tim is also aware and Colleen, I'm sure too, is, is the, uh, anything formal that we would do would, uh, infringe on the wetlands. It, it could, so we'd have to be careful. Like if we did a project, we would have to be careful about, thank you Kristen. Um, but if, if we just had kids kinda ride bikes around the path and eventually wear a path down, then I don't know if we would have to be as concerned.
Can I just ask a, a question about the dollars? So, um, the forecast of thirty-seven, eight, um, favorable, but your total was coming up to ninety, right?
Yep.
So we're.
He probably has.
Someone wanna walk me through that?
I can or you can?
No, go ahead.
So anytime that you run a deficit, um, then you would have to, um, extract from the fund balance. Um, so if, if at the end of the year, we're, uh, favorable forty thousand and our expenditures are fifty thousand over, then we would have to pull from our existing fund balance to cover the, the debt.
So, um, to spend the existing fund balance, you have to get voter approval.
Not if you run a deficit.
I mean, you apply it to the, I mean, what this does is it pulls it out of, transfer to the Champlain Valley School District.
Correct.
It's running it very tight. No, it's running the whole budget very tight to the end of the year. I mean, something could happen in the last couple of months. That could be problematic.
Well.
I, obviously others have had other discussion. I haven't been privy to it. So you said you.
I don't think that's true.
Oh, I thought I heard, I thought I heard that, um, you, Jeff, Keith. Keith, you and Jeff and Suzanne and Bob and Elaine talked about it, no?
At the budget agenda, that, so there's an agenda planning meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Where we talked about exactly what I just went over.
Uh-huh.
Actually, less.
Right.
I asked if you had talked about what projects you might wanna do and you'd said yes. And I said, how much total? And you said about ninety.
Right.
Yep. That's the extent of your knowledge.
That's the extent of my knowledge. So I have two responses, Colleen. The first one is, uh, that some of the projects that Jeff has just outlined to me, sound like they're not gonna get done until the summertime anyway. So if there is a timing concern, I think that is reduced by not performing some of these projects until later in the year, if not the end of the year. The second one is, I can't remember the number, but our fund balance is extraordinarily high. And I think we have plenty of funds in order to, uh, finance these projects. And I think we have plenty of funds in order to, uh, finance these projects.
Is there a, um, is there, and, you know, if it's over a certain amount or the spending in the past, it's had to be part of a budget that gets approved by voters? I mean, have we checked into that?
I would presume that Bob Mason and Jeff have, and Susan have worked on that, yes. In terms of how we spend the money, first off, i- if you have expenditures, you have to spend the money. Then the question is, well, what happens? And the answer, what I'm hearing is it comes out of the fund balance. That's where the money comes from in order to spend it. And all of these projects are one-time capital-type projects that, yes, eventually the carpet is going to need replacement again, but it is not, for example, a new staff member that requires annual costs. Which is the sort of marching orders that the board gave them, um, you know, at our last meeting or two meetings ago in terms of, well, what, what needs do you have that have really gone neglected over the last number of years? That, given where we are financially, through a robust fund balance and tight budget-controlled management for the last six, seven, eight years, puts us in a position where now we can look and say, well, what really is a need? What, I don't wanna say neglected, but what have we really not done that maybe we ought to have done? That now we're in a position where we have money available to address those needs, let's do that.
Well, at least one of these is also an investment, the lights are,
Yeah, cost savings, yeah.
Save us, right, is that, do the hand dryers end up saving money or not?
Oh, yeah.
Over time?
Yeah.
And the LED lighting has saved a ton.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you handle that in a transfer year, but that seems like it's a meaningful thing.
Oh, they're all meaningful.
Well, just in terms of the fact that over time, that would theoretically save the district.
It's not gonna,
What is our fund balance? Can we go there?
Ninety thousand, I understand and respect what you're saying, but ninety thousand dollars is not meaningful in a nine million dollar budget. To me, to me, these are all meaningful in terms of the environmental aspects, but dollar-wise, this is not meaningful to me, this is one percent.
Well, it's not even ninety thousand, cause they, you have.
That's, that's ninety thousand expenditures, you're right, if we're talking about, uh, going over budget, yeah, we're talking about half of that.
Right.
So, I mean, we could finish the year, uh, there's, there's been times where we forecasted out thirty-four in February and ended up being above a hundred thousand at the end of the year. So I, so, and, um, but this is all, uh, I was asked to present what I think the building needed, so this is all, um, it's a board decision at this point. That there's, there is a possibility that we are gonna run a deficit with these expenditures.
I, I'm, if, if, if I'm asked to make a decision right now, I don't feel comfortable making a decision without having Bob Mason in the room to explain some more about this at this point.
In terms of the transfer year?
Uh, i- it's,
Like what else do you wanna know?
We have never run a deficit before intentionally and just procedurally, I'm, you know, would wanna make sure that we do things right and have, you know, clear understanding of the mechanisms. Um, if, it sounds to me like there's one or two items that need to go out to bid, but not, but some of those you wouldn't necessarily need to put out to bid immediately, am I correct?
Everything's, uh, been put out to bid, the, the timing of it, um, didn't correlate to me having everything ready for this meeting, for you to sign off on the bids, if you were to sign off on the bids. The, um, yeah.
Right, cause you got school vacation weekend and summer is pretty much the options for getting work done.
Well, new discretionary spending up to fifteen K, right?
Correct.
So it was only the, the roof forty? Roof around forty and the carpet, I forget what you said that was.
Uh, sixteen for the carpet, three for the moving.
What is our fund balance, do we know?
Do you wanna see if Bob's available tonight?
If we're being asked to make a decision, yes.
Sure.
Let's, it's, um, so it depends, this is a discussion item.
Yeah, I don't think we are being asked to make a decision, so the question is, do we hear from Bob now? Or do we hear from Bob at the time that we're being asked to make the decision?
When are we gonna be asked to make the decision?
My hope is that if you,
Well, we have a meeting the first week in March.
My hope is that if you were, yeah, first week in March would be fine, but, um, that if you wanted to move forward, I would much rather, um, get the process going with, I mean, uh, vendors and, um, contractors or, as you know,
Right, no, I totally,
Get booked up pretty quickly.
Nope, I totally get it.
See if Bob's around?
I mean, I just, um, get what you need. I mean, we have one more, um, I guess I'm confused how many meetings we have left.
There's one on Thursday.
We have a final annual meeting and then we have more regular meetings?
We will be together on Monday, March sixth. And then we have for the annual meeting, and then there's a regular meeting on the third Tuesday of March.
Which is late in March, right.
Rewatch you, but not that much.
Thank you.
So we've gotten a little tied up and, uh, so I presented, um, the, at the last board meeting, I was asked to present if, if there was an opportunity for things that the building needs in order for us to feel good about it.
What, what happens if we have a deficit?
If you have a deficit in the current year, you draw down fund balance. So instead of carrying, uh, out of your audit, uh, an increase in your fund balance, you would decrease your fund balance.
Is it problematic?
Uh, the guidance I give you is it's not problematic, it might be disappointing to some, but it's not problematic unless you have no, uh, fund balance from the prior year available to cover your deficit.
Right.
Then it is problematic, then that's a, that's a, a big D deficit, if you will.
Or it is problematic if, after spending that money and reducing the fund balance, the fund balance is left in a position where it's small relative to what we as a board have decided historically it should be.
Correct.
And factually, if I remember correctly, and I don't remember the exact numbers, we are well above the level that we have decided historically we would wanna be at. So if we were to hypothetically spend forty or fifty thousand dollars from it, I think we'd still be well above that level.
I, I don't disagree with your analysis, I mean, you and I did that on a short summary, the front end, your, your math's pretty good.
I'm not bad for me.
That's as good as I can do.
So how about the, the mechanisms of this spending? Because it's money that hasn't been voted on, it's spending that has not been voted on as part of the budget.
Yes, yeah, you, you're right, you, you never have voter approval to incur a deficit. But, but boards do, things happen.
It's spending above, it's making a choice to spend above what we were budgeted, what we, what voters approved for budget. It's spending above that.
Right. Okay, that's, that's kind of, yes, that's what I'm,
My understanding is that to do that, at some point you needed to get voter approval. And I'm just thinking back to old facilities discussions going back.
Colleen, I would, I would tell you that in the, the actual world of, uh, spending, um, you would be, um, you would be dissuade, you'd be discouraged from spending it on something which was arbitrary and not necessarily needed and, because you didn't have voter authority to do that. So, um, but, but schools, uh, traditionally, for whatever reasons, spend above their budgets, that's how they run deficits. So I, I don't know, is your, um,
So mechanisms would be okay to, to do this?
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the process with which to do it is well-understood. How voters would react and how communities would react, I can't, I can't predict, but, um,
I just know that, you know, when we were, way back in the early days when we were still getting money from the state for facilities, which hasn't happened in twenty years or less, there was a, a need to have, to get that money from the state, you needed to have, um, the community vote on it.
Correct.
So I didn't know if that same rule applied.
No, cause they have no money to give you.
Right, it's not coming from the state, from the local.
It's coming from our bank account.
Okay. Thank you, I think I understand, I had asked for you to come in.
Yeah, I, I, a- again, my guidance would be, do some of it, don't do all of it. Don't, don't go so crazy that you're reporting for your auditors that the fund balance is now negative the last year of your existence.
So is forty-five thousand negative a horrible thing?
No, cause you've got a fund balance of, whatever the number, I, I can't, a hundred and eighty thousand?
Think it was higher than that.
Well, what I had to take out, what you,
Yeah, I understand, I, yeah.
You can't spend it twice, but it's, it's sizable enough, I just, I wouldn't, I've got one school, uh, that, that right now for a variety of reasons may for the first time in their history run a deficit in excess of their fund balance. And that's just not something you wanna do the last year you're here.
Oh, but it's not us?
No, it's not you.
Our, ours is significantly,
Different than that.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're not gonna be,
If that happens, I'll tell you, the voters are gonna be pissed.
What, that if you spend it all and then some?
The other, the other district.
That scenario comes to pass.
Yeah.
Justifiably. Especially if it's one town in particular.
So, without picking on our siblings, um,
Don't fill in the sentence too quickly, I think you're in the wrong place.
Okay, good.
No.
Good.
So what do you need from us? Now that we've,
When, if the, um, I, I would need a quorum for board approval on the bids. So I would recommend a bid for the roof and a bid for the carpets, and then I would need approval on the bids. And then as soon as I had the approval on the bids, then I would give Tim the green light to schedule the contractors for the roof, the, the carpet people for the carpet.
So we need to, we need to approve the bids going out? I thought we only approved them,
Uh, can I reword that a little bit?
Sure.
I, I think,
Awarding.
I think, uh,
Awarding the bids.
Uh, the three of us and Tim need to put together a package of, uh, projects that are going to be bid, the bid results, and then you will make a contract award for specific work to be done. But it's pointless for the three of us and Tim to do that work if you're not inclined to want that in front of you. So tonight, if you just said proceed, uh, and it, there was, there was at least three nods,
Yeah.
It's not, we'd, we'd go ahead and get the work done and then you'd see us next with, this is the work we're gonna do, these are the three bids we got, and we recommend you award this to so-and-so and this to so-and-so. So that's the process.
But I'm, I'm supportive of that, I don't wanna see the fund balance drawn down to zero.
We'll, we'll give you the sheet of paper.
No, no one, no one wants to see that and no one is advocating that.
Right.
I'm looking right now,
We'll give you the math.
The audit has the fund balance, right?
Well, last year was five forty and then this year it was about, I, I think with Bob's recent numbers, it was three eighty and I couldn't remember why the, the big change, but I, I know that it's in excess of three hundred thousand dollars.
It was, I, that five forty number sounds familiar. And then last, the budget that we passed last March authorized us to spend
Seventy-five.
One seventy-five?
So you gotta take that out of that amount.
Take that out. That's probably, That gets us to the three eighty, right?
Yeah, so that's, those are the two numbers that are in my head right now and, but I, I know that it's well above one hundred thousand, I, uh, I would say it's well above three hundred thousand.
Whoa.
No.
That can't be right, oh, no, sorry, that's the package.
But what, in that package that you prepared, right, we see that number somewhere.
Yeah, it's, you don't have that easily, it's the letter I sent you. No?
No, I mean, I, I can, I, I thought Keith was within seconds of finding it, but as soon as I find it, then.
So I guess the question I also have is, should we draw down our, should, should we run a deficit of forty-five thousand or something in that neighborhood? Will our fund balance that we're bringing to the consolidated district be comparable to what the other schools are bringing?
No, no, cause there is, there is no, there's no uniformity there, I mean, that,
It's all over the map.
Right.
Are we at the bottom, are we in the middle?
Uh, that's another sheet of paper, I, I don't, I, there's a,
You don't store those up here?
No, I don't.
I don't either, so I get it.
I don't.
But I, I guess you see where I'm coming from?
I do, but the, the CVSD board, I think their view is,
I have it, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and one in available fund balance as of six thirty-one, two thousand sixteen. So, that's,
Right, and then you take a hundred and seventy out of that for, for this year's budget.
What was the first number that you sent us?
So then we're down to two ten or something?
Right.
Okay, so we're, we're at two ten, and then we're talking about if, if it all goes to you-know-what in handbasket, we're down another forty-five from two ten, so that leaves us still above a hundred and fifty.
Right.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Stacy, I'd have to, I'd have to get you the profile of what the amounts are, but,
I just wanna make sure that we're not like being, um, fiscally irresponsible, that's all.
I, I don't, I've not used that phrase with the transact correspondence that we've exchanged.
Yeah, I'm good. I mean, I'm comfortable.
Do you have,
Thank you for your,
What you need from us then? Heads nodding.
Yeah, we, we may need to bring you into session sometime before the third week of March. Cause, uh, once you get Tim headed in a direction, he's kinda focused on.
And we can't, can we do that, Keith, at the Monday, six, March sixth?
If they're ready, sure.
Oh yeah, if we can, if we can get ready and,
Well, isn't there an organizational meeting that happens right after town meeting?
That's at the Regulable Board Meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay.
We can be ready on the sixth.
So we'll see, see about getting that, I'll take care of it.
Thank you for, um,
You missed this, don't use this.
I do, I wish I was here each year, maybe next year I could be with you.
Oh wait, I'm not here and you aren't here.
Maybe next year I could be with you.
I'm gonna find out where he hangs out next year.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, five point six, Pi Council.
It's me.
Yeah?
There's a lot to share, uh, inside my office meeting, cause I've been sick, so I'm going off of notes, so I'm gonna do my best to represent, but both of you were there, so you can feel free to interject where I'm missing something here. Um, they've got a lot of stuff going on right now, um, they're doing vacation food bags for the, free or reduced families if they want to opt-in to that during break, which I think is a great thing. Um, there was discussion of childcare being provided for town meeting, and I think they decided to let the select board figure out if that's an issue that they want to solve or not. I think they felt like if childcare was provided, it might be helpful for people to be able to attend town meeting.
Hmm.
So they've decided to defer that to the select board. The family dances are gonna be scheduled again this year. March tenth is the date. They are in need of baskets to make the silent auction baskets that they put together. So if anybody has baskets kicking around that they can donate, they're looking for that. Uh, there was also the fall, the spring grant cycle was discussed, and there were only two grants presented, both which were awarded. Um, and there was discussion around timing of grants and whether or not it should be once a year. And I guess I don't know really where that landed. Where did you guys land on that piece? Couldn't tell from the notes.
I think we just, uh, had a discussion around it, what happened.
Because I remember the fall, we like had tons of grants and we had to.
This is the second year in a row where we had more grants than we could award in the fall. And last year we had zero grants in the spring, and this year we had two. So I think teachers.
Well, and one of those was actually presented in the fall, and we asked him to come back in the spring.
So I think it's, uh, so I, you just said that it might make sense to do one grant round in this, in the fall with more money available, and, um, that's where teachers are seemingly in the mindset of here's what I need for the year.
Right.
Yep.
So, so it was just a discussion. I don't think a decision was made.
Yep. Kristin Miskavage stepped down as the grant, I guess what's the right word?
Coordinator maybe.
Grant coordinator. She's amazing, so I really appreciate her service to Pi. Melissa Levy is going to be taking her place. Uh, there was also discussion of the fundraising update where they are for the year. They have ten thousand two hundred earned towards their twenty thousand dollar goal. They think at the end of the year they're gonna be closer to seventeen, eighteen thousand. So they'll be a little bit short of their goal, but still a good year. Let's see, there's an update. Um, oh, they're gonna do Heinsburg Night at Lake Monsters again in June, so that's being coordinated by some people. There was also discussion about the garden. Susan Lepel and Heidi Simkins have been coordinating the garden. It's a lot of work, a lot of time. They're stepping down and they're gonna work to find suitable replacements to keep it going because they, Pi believes that it's a great thing for the school, and I agree. There's, um, talk of getting a school directory published this summer, and there was talk with Shelburne about what they're doing. And so I think what you decided is that Pi would put together a directory with an opt-in feature, so you could opt, opt out, and you're gonna use the phone thing to let people know, right? Okay, so people can opt out of the directory if they don't want their number in there. And there's gonna be another parent learning event scheduled this spring, and there were some suggestions as to what to do, but that will be coming out. And the next Pi meeting is March sixteenth, and the four or five musical, which you talked about, is March twenty-fourth, and kindergarten registration is April thirteen and fourteen. And they're gonna do a staff appreciation week in May. And there was discussion of a book donation to the library in honor of retiring teachers. So that's pretty much what they talked about. Sounds like I missed a good meeting.
All right, thank you.
How many retiring teachers do we have?
One known at this point.
Pi is really busy.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds like they're doing a lot of really good work.
Yeah, they're great.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. That's important that we recognize that and encourage them to keep going.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because as this board activity dissipates, that's gonna become the hub.
Yep.
A hub for the community.
The, the things that they, the grants that they issue, the things that they're doing, it's, it's amazing. Mm-hmm. I say they, it's really us, but. Because Pi is us, right?
We are all.
We are all Pi.
All right, thank you. Uh, discussion matter six point one, communications, uh, there has not been a boards corner written in a while. I was going to write one, but then I was discouraged from writing it by someone. I honestly can't remember who it was.
Not me.
But, um, at this point.
I would never discourage you from, from taking that up.
At this, at this point, I think the ship has sailed on that. Unless someone has a burning desire to, uh, put something together for the citizen or the record. Uh, at this point, I think, you know, handing, essentially handing things off to the CVSD board is the way to go, and it's communications folks. Um, I added a six point two annual meeting preparation because I did want to talk about what we're gonna do on March sixth.
Which I was getting so excited about before.
Um, so, obviously, in the past, we have spent the bulk of that meeting talking about the proposed budget for the following year. We don't have to do that this year. Um, I have always viewed these meetings as, uh, first, uh, celebration of the school and a report of its status. So I think in answer to your question, yeah, I would think it would be prudent and helpful to put together a couple slides as you've done in years past that talk about the state of the school and report to the community.
Like points of pride?
Hmm?
Points of pride, like they did before?
Yeah, yeah.
For the flyer?
Um, and, you know, honestly, it should be a celebration of the school district. It's the last time we're gonna get together as the Heinsburg School District. So we should celebrate our school, our community, the, the district which is going away. And obviously, there'll be some celebration of board members as well. At the agenda planning meeting, the topic of board service came up, and I thought it would be good to celebrate all the people that have served on the school board throughout the years. But if I recall correctly, Elaine mentioned she's going to try to put together that kind of a celebration, I think in conjunction with the retreat in May. And she's gonna invite all known and living current residents.
Might be, I mean, I was gonna say it'd be nice to call in people in the audience, but we'll probably be lucky to get half a dozen people.
I'll be very curious how many people do come. The fact that it immediately precedes town meeting doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people will come because they know that they're gonna come to town meeting. I think a number of people will come probably because they don't understand yet that we're not gonna present a budget.
I was just gonna say that, they're probably gonna come expecting to know, under.
Are you leading with that?
Get grilled on the budget.
Am I leading with that? I don't know that I'm gonna lead with it. But for example, the only reason I know the record hasn't come out yet is because someone was, from the record, was kind enough to email me when she hadn't heard from me around this time, saying, hey, if you're gonna put a flyer in the record.
Get to getting.
This, get to getting, exactly. Um, so, you know, the, the, there are, I think, a number of people in our community that don't understand that the Heinsburg School District is not gonna have a budget to present.
Do you want me to put anything in the Viking?
Um.
I feel like Front Porch Forum would be good.
I mean, how much do we communicate that it's not, because we also don't want people to come and be upset that they've, that this is what they always.
I would, uh.
Well, there, I mean, there's a, uh, something's gonna show up in everyone's mailboxes. That's, uh, actually, it's probably there now.
But I wonder, you know, I just wonder to the average person.
Right.
If, if they've always come to town meeting, or the annual meeting of the Heinsburg School Board. And they, like, it might just, without ever opening up the paper, they might just go and by habit and think that, so I guess my.
They're gonna be expecting it.
My thought about going in the Viking, that, that would also be inconsequential.
Yes, put something in the Viking. And I will put something on Front Porch Forum in a day or two, leading up before Monday the sixth. You know?
So.
Talking about how we're having a meeting, but we won't have a budget.
Should you also post something on Front Porch Forum about when there is a meeting?
Well, the, I mean, there's supposed to be something that's coordinated going out, but yes, yes.
Am I selling that, am I, um, communicating that it's a, it's a celebration of where Heinsburg currently is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I think, you know, a lot of people show up at the school meeting, not just for the budget, but they want to know what's the programming in the school? How do, you know, how does the budget support programming? That question doesn't change. The budget supports the program, and really, you know, next year's budget is level funding program. If there's any, if there are any changes in the programming, we should know that. But, um, you know, the budget was developed to maintain current status. So that's, that's what you can talk about. You can talk about, I mean, because it didn't really matter where the money came from. It could have been centralized a year or two ago, and you still would have been talking about how the dollars that come from taxes support the programming in the school.
From, from any one of the board's perspectives, um, what do you think the, the key slides in years past that we use?
Enrollment, you know, with your student-teacher ratio. Uh, what are your, you know, so some of the demographic stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what are your initiatives? What's a multi-year plan that you have? You know, three years ago, you started, let's say, the math program, whatever, where are you now? What, what's, what, what are the high points, the achievements? How does the budget continue to support next year? What are the plans for next year? Are any changes, any different, anything different?
I would add, if when you look at last year's slides, and we highlighted what the increases in the budget were for, for example, yeah, I think we hired a new teacher. We always say, well, you know, the new budget includes hiring a new teacher. Some closure on that would be nice. So if you look at the slide from last year that says what we're gonna do to then carry through and say, well, with last, with the budget, the current budget year, we went and hired a new teacher, and the result is, you know, in the, sort of in the, um, class size, you know, the effect, the ramification is, is, you know, they're at this instead of that.
That, that might be tricky, but I can.
No, I, no, and I'm not questioning that. I, I think we're gonna have to be careful. I mean.
Right.
Because if I do class-sized student-teacher ratios, and then somebody from the audience says, I wanna talk about twenty-one kids in first grade.
Yes, that's, that's appropriate.
Is the budget going to support that?
That's a really good question, and I would hope that people in the community would feel very comfortable challenging, you know, I don't want to, I don't want thirty kids in my kindergarten class. Yes, we want to hear things like that. And that.
And you have an answer.
You know, because the, the new CVSD board, the budget, one of the parameters used this year was looking at class size. So enrollment going forward is going to be important and to.
So I can speak to what is in the CVSD budget for this whole year eighteen?
I don't think you should. That puts you in an awkward position.
You don't need to talk dollars.
You don't need to.
So if they say, uh, well, I see that you're going from two, uh, uh, three sixth-grade teachers to two seventh-grade teachers, do I say that in the budget for next year is an additional teacher?
Sure, or, you know, yeah, I mean.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, then say it.
Yeah, because in the past, you've really present, you've presented on the.
Budget meeting now.
Well, I mean, dollars by program, yes.
What, what I.
Because there's two, I can keep it purely a celebration.
No, you don't have, you don't have to talk about tax implications. So I, I, so in that situation, I think that's good news, and you can convey that. And, you know, if need be, one of us will interject and sort of say, timeout, you know, we're not talking about the budget, that's a different meeting. But for example, if your answer to that question was, oh.
What is for first grade?
Only two, only two teachers, well, I think it's important that that, that our community be heard on that. And there will be administrators and at least two of the CVSD board members there to hear that. And I think that's important that they hear it.
Okay.
Because every, you know, every community's dealing with, um, class sizes that are pushing the upper limit. There's no question about it. You know, every community is in that position. And what you've presented on the past has been class size, class configuration, plans. We have, you know.
As it relates to the budget.
Right, so last year Keith presented on the tax implications and the nitty-gritty stuff, but, um. So, you know, if those questions come up, we'll deal with it, but I think you can just plan on like what you've done before.
But an hour is a long time. How, in the past, how long have you spoken? Maybe ten, fifteen minutes?
We don't have to use that whole hour.
I, I've only, if I ever only spoken for ten or fifteen minutes.
I mean, how long did, how long did you speak last year? I feel like it wasn't, I feel like it wasn't super long.
Yeah, Susan's doing all this, so it's okay.
The thing I remember from a couple, I think it was two years ago, was that you highlighted, like you, you focused for long enough that as somebody brand-new to it could understand one program, I first don't remember what the program was, but like, I think you even brought one of the teachers to talk about it. And I just remember that being like, oh, like, I feel like I at least, as somebody who's completely disconnected, I at least understand a little tiny piece of the culture and what's happening, so.
So because, because the timing, I mean, we're talking less than two weeks, so it's, so my thought is. My thought is next week, I'll, I'll put something together, share it with Keith. If he shares, I like, I don't know how the sharing works, but I'll share it with Keith, and then you can give me feedback. You can send it to the other board members, however it works. Do I send it to all the board members? I, I always get confused on.
Why don't you send it to me? I'll look at it, and then if I have, you know, and you and I can get another, a second draft, and then we'll send it to everybody.
Okay. And then Susan and I will discuss who's saying what.
Right.
But then the, uh, I assume that you'll start, is there a moderator?
I'll start. I don't think there is, so we'll probably have to do the formality of getting a moderator appointed. Um, so we'll get the moderator appointed, and then I'll start and do a welcome. And then I'll turn over the state of the school to you, and then I'll take it back to, essentially close the meeting, take any questions, if there are any, but essentially close the meeting.
Yeah.
Can I ask for one other thing? I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but one other thought that I had was, it might be nice to give, we've talked about this a little bit, give the community, whoever's there, an idea of how they can continue to engage.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, just do like a little line item on like, we're going away, but that doesn't mean.
Like, school's still here.
Right. Who can you talk, who should you go to, who can you go to? Right, you, or, you know, the, the consolidated school board's still approachable, whatever. I don't know, I just think that's a nice little thing to end with, like, you're not being left tongue-dry.
Yeah.
Would it be cool to include pictures too? Like, I think pictures are.
Well, initially, when we were talking about celebrations, I was even thinking about, you know, kind of what Paula Lasher did and put student videos, but I think, I think that this is gonna be more what it, what it typically looks like.
Yes.
And, and keep it, um.
Keep it simple stupid.
People will be interested in the program. Are they, you know, like, how many hours of, of French and Spanish do they have? Um, you know, what's the focus of science these days? You know, that's what people want to know.
Yeah.
Besides how much it's gonna cost, but they're, they're, you know.
They want to see.
They want to see you.
They want to see.
They want to see principals.
Their tax dollars working. So they want to hear about the program.
Not being wasted, right?
Is, that the money is not being wasted. That's, yes. Now, we don't have the second half of that, which is, we're doing such a great job, now we're asking you for more.
It's unfortunate that our meeting is after that other meeting, so we can't even direct them to that meeting.
Well, again, this is.
Direct people to materials online and future board meetings and stuff.
Yeah, and the, and the flyer.
Well, I should do that part.
The flyer.
Well, maybe you can include a slide for that.
I was gonna say, yeah, it's not your.
The, the fact of the matter is, this all goes away after this year.
Not me, man.
Next year, next year, there's gonna be one meeting. It's gonna be one board, one meeting.
No principals.
Oh, no, you're all gonna be there.
I'll let you discuss that with the superintendent.
It'll be a longer meeting.
All right, uh, seven point O, nothing. Eight point O consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve that, please.
Approve. Approve. Aye.
So move.
Thank you, Shayla. Second.
Second.
They were seconded.
Stacy, all those in favor?
I tried to approve it. I tried to second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, no opposed, no abstents, uh, abstentions it carries. So next meeting dates, well, we talked about this before.
Are they right there?
Just for the record, they're right here.
Sorry, Keith.
March sixth.
I don't have it printed out.
Six P M. At the CVU auditorium is our annual, uh, information hearing, budget information hearing. Well, not really. Then vote, everybody vote on March seventh. Uh, March twenty-one is our next regular board meeting. The CVSD Board, again, for, uh, some budget information. Their annual meeting is February twenty-third, six P M., CVU room one forty-one, forty-two. March sixth is an annual budget informational hearing at four o'clock at CVU room one forty, one forty-two. Vote on the budget, March seventh at Town Hall, and then they have a regular meeting on the eighth.
What's the eighth?
The CVSD Board's regular meeting.
Thanks.
All right. Any questions?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I love that. Do we need a second to adjourn?
I don't know, I'd stay give you one.
I don't know that we do, but I don't, do you need a second on a motion to adjourn? I don't know, if you do, Shayla's gonna second it, so.
And we all said aye.
Fine, order adjourned. Thank you.
Good thing I got dinner. This is a long meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.